Trustee Trombley.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee here, Mr. Skew, Mayor Martin.
Here. The motion to approve minutes previous meeting?
Double.
Got a second?
I need to scan with the gear. Second one.
Okay. Any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? I would say they approve, signify the same aye. Aye. They decide. And then for extension, major group. Presentations, petitions, communications, notices. General question period for members of the community. We'll have your report from Mr. Pedro. Code enforcement.
Well, it's been a fairly quiet month. Not a lot of building permits sent out. Try to do letters, grass, property maintenance issues, government inspection, food, big thing. Other than that, it's...
I don't know if you're responding to your letters. I know we're down.
Well, the grass issues are done, except the new ones that I'm finding is I'm going around. I went and sent some out here within a week or so, and so I gotta give them time. I didn't get a chance to get around today to check and see, but I would say for the most part, they're responding.
You had a busy morning?
Yeah.
Do you want to share with the board some of the things we sent to the rural clinic?
Well, concerning the water, the wastewater?
Here.
Yeah, actually, she came up and Matt Cooper, our engineer for the group, basically gave her an overview of the project we have in mind. And she was quite supportive of it, I thought. And she could have been saying giving us letters of support for it. So I think that is finally moving forward. I'm optimistic on the regional council grant. It's the big one. Yeah. If we really have to get something for that, it'd be kind of nice.
A little bit of support is important to that one.
Yeah. I spoke with the engineers for a while after everybody else went to the medical center, some doings down there. But they're, they seem to think that we have a better than even chance of getting something from it. And if we don't, the business is like, step forward for next year's grant funding, because they'll respond if they deny us. That's the why they would deny us, so we can fight through the application now. And that's just one of five that we're fighting for. So, you know, I do believe at the end, and she thought it was a great thing, the way we were doing it. You know, she's playing, she goes to a lot of areas where, well, one person wants to do something, but the other side doesn't. It's very hard to get anything done. But here, you have three entities that want to do it. So it's very encouraging. And I think we score well in that aspect.
It seems like there's a lot of support out there.
Yes.
In fact, a couple of people have been, put some headwater up there, and they were very supportive of it. I think we're moving along.
Well, the supervisor mentioned that they're gonna wanna build in the next couple of years, I guess. And they would be looking for sewer water along Route 11 corridor. So I think that's, you know, a lot of support.
Yeah, that's the thing. Support in that area, yeah. Thanks, man. Okay. My report. The Night of Music on July 29th by the River was a resounding success, well attended. I believe there was somewhere between 70 to 75 people there. It was just a great evening to enjoy the music, visit with our neighbors, and relax by the river. I would like to thank the young musicians who did a great job displaying their talents, and Janet McPetrich, who organized the successful event. There is talk of another musical event down by the river, or down in the River Park before the summer season is over. Watch for notices in the paper, on the village website, and on Facebook announcing the date and time. Seemed to be a lot of interest for it. Village Fest will be held August 18th in conjunction with the townwide garage sale and open house at the Champlain Telephone Company. Join us for free ice cream and many displays from, and fun activities for young and old from noon to 4:00 P.M. The ice cream is again this year donated by Stuart Shops, and we would like to especially thank them for their generous donation and in making our Village Fest the special event of the year here in the village. Please notice that the War of 1812 banners have been hung around the village commemorating this very important historical event. The DPW crew did a wonderful job getting these banners hung and through the village and on display. The village has started the playground fundraising effort to install a new playground on village property next to the community garden. We have applied for a grant from the New York State Parks and Recreation, but we will need more funds to make this dream a reality. In addition to a children's play area, there will also be installed an adult workout area so parents can exercise while their children play on the new equipment. Letters seeking donations will soon be going out to area businesses. Individuals wishing to donate may do so by contacting the village office at (298) 4152 for information, or by sending your donation to the Playground Fund, Village of Champlain, 1104 Route 9, Main Street, Champlain, New York, 12919. Any donations will be greatly appreciated and put to good use in getting new playground equipment for the village residents and others who visit the village. The aforementioned community garden is doing very well despite some minor events to the contrary. The JCEO food shelf has been receiving fresh produce from many gardeners, and this continues to show the spirit of giving in this community, thanks to all who participate in this activity. And now my monthly request. Property owners, please maintain your lawns and keep the debris picked up. And, secondly, please slow down on the village streets, especially on Elm and Church Street. There are some serious safety issues here. So please watch this meeting on the village streets. Thank you. Trustee Trombley.
We're gonna change it up, huh? And what, I'll make the report tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay. Trustee Trombley.
I really am lucky to report this evening either, other than there's a zoning board meeting on this Wednesday that I will be attending. Other than that, it's a good way.
What's the issue?
This is for a sign up by the duty free to use variance, corner of Locust Street, and do whatever the billboard.
Is this a new sign?
Well, there was a sign there apparently quite a while ago, and it hasn't been there in a while, and they're getting around to redoing it. So they need to use, have a use variance, and it hasn't been up to date in a while.
It's not allowed use also, reusing used there. It's not billboards.
But I thought there was one there.
There was one, but it came down, and the use lasts longer than a year.
Yeah.
So it has to revert back to a conforming use, which this would not. So the zoning board has a tough job in front of them.
Very cool. Oops. Right, go ahead. Trustee, go ahead.
Just two real brief items. One, I'd like to acknowledge Superintendent Sorrell and his crew for picking up a large pile of sand on the commercial area at the bottom of the lot. Apparently runoff that accumulated somewhat of beach blocking the sidewalk. There was observing people that were pretty much jumping out of the street to get around the sand. That was picked up. The area looks a lot better. Could have been even a safety issue to that large pile of sand. One other item that I noticed, like, we may have already have something in order for signage. I know we have some signage problems in the village, as far as that or disappearance. There's a village sign on the south end or top of Church Street. It seems to be pretty sun faded. I don't ensure we already have a replacement set up for that or...
Right by the cemetery?
Yeah. There's two. I noticed that the one was really getting sun faded. I thought we had discussed that before about getting some new signage. Other than that, the 480s and 500s are great. Really nice.
Yeah, a couple of those signs in the village. I mean, there's various... Thank you. I have any needs report? Monday night. Movie night is Wednesday, starting at 6:00 P.M. Rain date will be the following Wednesday, the 22nd. There will be games, music, food, and at dusk, the movie Dolphin Tales will play on a huge screen. Bring lawn chairs and blankets. Food will be served from Papa John's to Dunkin' Donuts. The movie is free. Proceeds from the food will benefit our playground in Champlain. Special thanks to Dunkin' Donuts and Papa John's for sponsoring this event. So the festivities will begin at 6:00 P.M. The rain date, and the weather looks fine right now, but the rain date will be the 22nd, and the movie will begin at dusk. Have the report from the clerk, please.
I remember it was the topic we were spending on, the report for July.
Any questions on the report?
Our wheels, man. The plow?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
It's got some, what kind of return? Wheels. There's also the... The vote for payment?
Yes, the best.
Yes.
Eight four thousand six forty nine.
Considering the amount of streets that we get covered this year, I think that's a bargain.
I do too.
Can't give you an estimate, seven thousand, Mr. Church Street.
Any other discussion on that? Any motion to approve the warrant?
Still no.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Any more discussion? Can the board call a vote, please?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Any other discussion on that? Any motion to approve the warrant?
Still no.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the warrant? Any more discussion? Can the board call a vote, please?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Well, if you, if you just, if you just kind of, um, yeah, then you have to add the amount. Yeah. Yeah. If you want to do it now, um...
Okay. Uh, you would, you have a request to send...
Just be, do it out of the, um, form of the, uh, which is, um, um...
You have to...
The registration. Yeah, we, they bill us for that.
Okay.
But registration, you know, to get the discount, I think, in the 10th or the 20th.
Any words approval to send Juanita and Donna to the Fall Training School in Lake Placid? We've got copy of the, the amount. We are a NACOM member village, so for the two of them, we assign a $480 for the training, which includes all the classes. And then we'll see that the, consider the time. It's also $1,700 for the hotel for the length of the conference, a total of $2,191.60, which will be coming out of...
A thirteen twenty-five from the school.
Still no. Need more approval. I guess now, so that you can, you can, you can register, but before the registration can, and then the late registration can enter the 20th of August.
I make a motion that we can donate enough to make classes for the training.
Got a second?
Got a second.
This is the, every other year, but I'm...
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? That was for the sum of $2,191.60. You're moving? Okay. Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. So we'll add the 21, no, just the 21 or he...
Just add the $480 to the warrant. Let's do it.
Do you have any motion for that now? Any motion to, um, to, um, to...
Got a second? Okay. Any, any discussion on that? Have a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, any report from Superintendent, please?
Well, you guys all have a copy of the work log. County stopped by today. They're gonna be here next week to strip our streets. And I figured it out for what I had in the budget. I am going to do Oak Street. I'm going to do Walnut Street and Church. And that's gonna estimate about $1,500, I think a $250 budget. You see on the warrant, there was a lot of slug state in the landfill. What we're doing, we're cleaning the bays right out, and we're using the millens off of Church Street to put a hard base in the bed, because it makes it too hard to pick up, and they go with the lower, they're seeing for the dirt. So that's why the millens are there, and we're gonna be using that for that. And most of this week, the last, there's one you and I set in here. We started going to all curb boxes, the tie-ins, and some papers are missing, some went to I have to shut off the 30 years event here. So we're going around, we're going through the whole book, we did all the books, make sure the tie-ins are all there. The guys are going out and getting some that we don't have. And instead of having one book, all kinds of papers, everything in a clear wrapper, we'll have that all set, so they can come grab it, make a copy of that. Eventually, I could scan on the computer and put it right on, so we can just push it out.
That would be the way to do it.
Yeah. And yes, I do know about the signs, so...
I'd also like to comment that there were a couple properties here in the village that, uh, the bidders failed to respond to have the grass cut, and Larry went up with his own brush hog to the town. Cut those, cut the grass and Mr. David's, which, and then we use some public service, uh, public service.
Need...
Community service workers to help clean up some, uh, to make sure the credit, credit is paid.
In regards to, you could be doing some of the side of the street to the brush hog that you haven't had, trying to knock it back a little bit?
You can't from both sides of the street.
Well, actually, this is town, I'm not sure if it's getting bad, but that's, that's probably just, just our limit, yeah.
That's town. I used, usually when I, I had to go talk last year, I did that, I did that one.
And by your ski tech from...
Yes. Yeah. We're, we're, we're gonna go to there with the, with the lower, because there's a lot of stuff that makes me have to hit clean out, push the snow away.
Yeah, it's great to road, yeah.
We just got a gas valve and a water valve on that side of the road, and it's got something else that might...
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to...
Taking some of that, for the streets to pull off the problem, this one.
Yeah. Eventually, if you decide the streets and it's, it's up on top of the new road, we are gonna take the lower and go back the foot, so some people are gonna move, do something along. If you look at the town, they're gonna do it all over the roads. The water's gonna run off on the lights, the road's great.
Yeah. I agree.
Any other questions, please? For the correspondents, please?
A letter of support from the village regarding the northern tier recreational trail. Thank the letter to Superintendent, Highway Superintendent Allen, who seemed to help in the town of Champlain during the church street milling. Thank the letter to Tim Adams, Augsburg, who raised a lot of treatment plan operators for the tour of their facility. Thank the letter to Flint County Highway Superintendent Al Rass, who provided help in Church Street. Various notice of violation letters. Letter to Mike Demars regarding proposal for water sewer fee exclusion, deserting residence on Prospect Street. Correspondence from Mayor Lapine, Village of Malone, regarding block related buildings and light. Notes of violation to Steve Dunn for uncut grass at 139 Elm Street. From a favor for 2012, 2013. Letter to David Fernier regarding unsafe building violation to 93 Oak Street.
I'd also like to mention that we, that we received a letter from John Rowe. Dear Board members, on behalf of the Champlain Memorial Library Board, I would like to thank you very much for your recent donation. It is greatly appreciated. Signed, John L. Rowe, treasured. I don't often get thank you letters from folks, so wanted to share that with you. Any discussion on the correspondence? Okay. Full business. Nothing on any formation yet of the district. I mean, that's part of the project, so hopefully, in the not so distant future, we'll be able to say, that one's gone. It seems like he's been here forever.
He's got the gold green hair.
Yeah. Okay. Under new business, need a motion to change the board meeting next month from the 10th to the 5th.
Mayor Martin?
We will not be here. On vacation, right?
Mm-hmm. Well...
Sorry about that?
No, that's, that's, that's okay. Done here. And the committee will be here. So, uh, need a motion to change it.
I make motion to change the...
Okay. Got a second?
Got a second.
All those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, we've done the NACOM, NACOM conference approval for Donna and Alida. We have, I'd like a resolution or a motion to sign a memorandum of understanding between the town and the villages, Village of Champlain and the Village of Russell's Point, for the water and wastewater project. It's a necessary document to show that the three, three entities are cooperating on this, on this project. We are willing to see this project through once the funding is, is acquired.
Need a motion to...
You need a motion?
Yes, I need a motion, a motion to sign it.
I need a motion to sign a memorandum of understanding.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Signify by saying aye to approve.
Aye.
Aye. You need to say? Question curious. Need a motion to approve striping or de-striping on Church Street, Oak Street, and Walnut Street? Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? You want approximately when?
Uh, the next week.
Next week. And it's approximately $1,500?
Uh, yeah, it's 1.4 miles.
Okay.
$848 a mile, so. And they're, they've already marked, made their marks on the road on Church Street. It's a stop.
Church Road and, uh...
Walnut. I think that's over.
Uh, since we're spending funds here, do a roll call, please?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Emergency services, Kelly Donahue, come up and talk to me a week or two ago, a couple weeks, huh? About changing some streets, the names on some streets here in the village, or E Street in particular. It seems that down by the community garden, you have a little stretch, that's Church Street. And at the end of that first curve, it becomes Water Street, and goes down, and then at the next curve, it becomes Main and Lane. So you have three different streets and one little turnaround there. So emergency services would like us to, would like us to, uh, change to one name. I recommend or suggest that we change it, the whole street, the whole new shape, from Church, Main Street, all the way down around, by the old barber shop there. Change it so that the whole street is Main and Lane. Okay? I think we need a motion.
I make a motion to change the name to Main and Lane for consistency.
There you go.
That was awesome.
Got a second? All those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Also, the concern was, uh, up here on Route 9. Right now, in all of our correspondence and our letterhead, it's 1104 Route 9, Main Street. Kind of sort of wanted to know what we were gonna go with here. I guess we should stay with the Route 9 and go under that, rather than stretch it to 1104 Main Street. Stay with the 1104 Route 9, Main Street in for emergency. That'll help clear up some emergency issues. As was suggested, the, the Main Street should be on the, uh, which way to go.
Do, uh, is the board responsible for, uh, focusing on Water Street or Church Street or whatever, for change of address or, excuse me? So emergency services?
Well, we should have to tell emergency services that 1104 is street.
Okay. I don't think it's, uh, what we need to, that we need to do.
Could be mentioned.
Yeah, it will be once, once you make the decision, the, the emergency services, emergency services send them a letter. And they'll let the post office and stuff and all that.
Okay. Very good.
So Church Street used to go right straight through the river, right down by the burden. It was the road, we'll do it down.
I don't even know what...
We need to fill up it. Fire trucks on there.
Little bit. I don't know.
I need a motion to attend, I'd like to see three of us attend, the code enforcement training on August 28th for, to deal with vacant, neglected, and abandoned properties. It's August 28th, it's a Tuesday, at Pledsford Police Department. There's a $40 registration fee for NACOM members. I think it would be, considering some of the buildings here in the village, I think this would be a very good, a very good experience for us. Might could be in Oregon?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go back to the...
Yeah.
All right? It looks like a, it looks like a, a presentation that will, that will benefit us in particular. So Tom presented, yes?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself. Kim, you wanna go?
Sure.
Well, I would like to.
All right, so the three of us, uh, would be the sum of $120. Need a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, sum of $120, send three of us to attend.
Okay. Got a second? Here, for expanding funds?
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee present.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye.
Do you need to add this to the warrant?
Sure.